By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Roll call, Mr. Manfredi.
Ms. Sokolowski, excused. Ms. Park.
Here.
Ms. Brandon.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Frost.
Here.
Prayer, council?
Please, rise. O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
Redes to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I got, I just got one announcement tonight. I don't know if everybody knows, but Mr. Manfredi, this will be his last meeting at the prayer council of Conshohocken. And I'd just like to thank him for what he did for the Conshohocken and wish him luck in whatever he's about to do. Thank you, Mr. Manfredi.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you, sir.
And you asked me to announce for you that you had an executive session immediately prior to this meeting for employment and litigation matters. So that should be noted for the record. The first item on the agenda is Mr. Weckerly, Valley Forge Tourism and Convention. Mr. Griffin and council members, the request was made for a very brief five-minute presentation to you and five minutes for Q and A for the convention board, so if you would, please.
Yes, good evening. I'm Dan Weckerly. I'm communications manager for the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. My thanks to the borough supervisors for having me here. We are, our organization is the official tourism organization for all of Montgomery County. We bear the Valley Forge name, but our charge through the county commissioners is to support and promote all of Montgomery County as a destination for tourists, both domestic and international. So I'm here just very briefly as an update for some of our latest initiatives and sort of a status info sharing session to let you know where we are and where we're headed, but also to recognize Conshohocken Borough specifically and what an important role you play in our ability to bring tourists to Montgomery County. So our organization is, we're over 50 years old. We were established in 1963. As a county office, we split apart as a separate nonprofit in the early 90s, and we've operated in that stance ever since. Our main source of funding is through the lodging tax, which is levied through the hotels in Montgomery County. There are 74 of them. And so it is a non-residential tax, so this is levied on visitors who come from out of county, out of state, out of the country, who come and stay in our hotels. Back in the spring, that tax was increased, so we've got a little bit more operational wiggle room in our budget, but still comparatively, it's lower than our neighbors in Bucks Chester, Delaware County, and certainly Philadelphia and places like Atlantic City where it's significant. That's the major source of our funding. We're also a membership organization. We are at an all-time high in memberships. When I came onboard about four and a half years ago, we were 250, 280, somewhere around there. We're now at 500 members. So these are hotels, restaurants, historical sites throughout the county, parks, trails, even just regular businesses that want to sort of access who we are and what we do and connect and take advantage of the relationships that we've built throughout the county for things like marketing. We also offer them co-op opportunities. That's probably the smallest source of our revenue, but we do generate some revenue from co-ops. So lodging tax, membership dues, co-ops are our main source of funding. And what we do with that, what we do with those funds is crucial, and I'm not sure a whole lot of people know what the economic impact on tourism is for the county. But the latest statistics that we have, which reflect activity around 2014, 2015, show it to be extremely healthy, and so the news is incredibly good. Tourism in Montgomery County is a $3.5 billion industry, and I think that's a figure that raises an awful lot of eyebrows. People don't think about it. That economic impact supports jobs. It supports 30,000 jobs across the county, including mine, for which I am extremely grateful. So it is big business, and it's ongoing. And as I said in my opening, Conshohocken is a huge piece of how we attract visitors, both domestically and internationally, to come to Montgomery County. And we do get a fair number of visitors, both domestic and international, coming to see iconic Montgomery County sites like King of Prussia Mall. King of Prussia Mall gathers about 2.2 million visitors a year. Two million of those are in November and December, and that's a surprise to no one who has seen the parking lots in November and December. But about 22 million visitors a year come to King of Prussia Mall. Valley Forge National Historical Park is about 2.2 million visitors a year, and we're really excited. So the latest development with the park involves the newly opened Museum of the American Revolution downtown. That partnership is very tight. Through our organization, we're facilitating collaboration on both sides of that equation, both with the new museum and with Valley Forge National Historical Park. You may or may not know, but there are several exhibits downtown that used to reside in the park, and that collaboration was huge in connecting the two and supplying those assets for visitors, really, from all over the globe to come and see. But Conshohocken is, you know, we have a dining guide. It comes out twice a year. We estimate, it's tough to get our arms around it, but we estimate about 600 or so different restaurants in Montgomery County, and Conshohocken is huge for dining. And so hats off and congratulations to you for cultivating that niche. I will say, in my role as communications manager, I handle our blog, I handle things on our website, and I'm out in the county an awful lot. And there are communities that are modeling recovery based on what you've done here in Conshohocken. So there are former industrial centers throughout the county whose economic prosperity has ebbed for a variety of different reasons, similar to what has happened here, who are watching you and seeing you pull yourselves up on the bootstraps of tourism and are following suit. And I can cite examples in county, Pottstown, right? In the midst right now of a major revival based on tourism, much in the vein of what you've already pulled off. So kudos to you. You're serving as a really inspirational example to communities throughout Montgomery County. And even outside, we're watching the same sort of thing happen in Phoenixville. Outside of county, we still sort of, we could move the county borders to embrace Phoenixville. We love Phoenixville. But similar, very similar business model, and they're having great success in doing that. So, but we sort of position Conshohocken as at the forefront of that movement of redirecting business reliance, of generating economic impact in a different way, and really, really succeeding at it. So your restaurant outlook is extremely bright, and we're very proud of it, as well as you should be. We also are into your trails. The Schuylkill River Trail is serving as a model, really, all over the country for integrating outdoors and assets along the trail and supporting that. But even things down to your Fourth of July celebration, huge with the Soapbox Derby. I was here myself last Fourth of July covering it. So anyway, in wrap-up, just, we, our organization is here really to thank you, to update you, and thank you for all that you do in support of tourism, whether overtly or maybe subconsciously. But it all nests up into a really appealing visitor experience, and we're using that to bring people here from all over the country and all over the world. So kudos to you. Thank you very much. If there are questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Any questions?
Would we contact you directly if we came up with something new and exciting in the town that might be of interest to you?
We are absolute, we are all about promotion through our website, through our social media, so yes. And I can give you a card if that helps, yes. We're here as a resource. We're here to promote.
Have we reeled it tonight, but it's top secret. We'll wait a while.
Lips are sealed. I got it. Anything else?
Any more questions?
Okay, thank you. I've got things for you. I'll pass those out now, and you can get on to the rest of your agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Manfredi?
Mr. Griffin, next on the agenda is Julie Davis, Don Lapas Associates. As you know, Ms. Davis is our compliance and oversight finance, and we started this practice this year through the budget process of doing quarterly financial reports.
Thank you.
So Ms. Davis is here to give the first quarter.
So just a status of what's going on in the finance department. We are preparing like crazy for the audit. The audit preparation is almost done. I should be giving Angela the audit entries within a week or so. Hopefully, the audit will start in mid to late May. Again, we're still on target for that end of June draft date. So that's where we are with that. The new software is working well. We have a few things that we want to fine-tune a little bit, but other than that, it's really, it's doing well. So you have a treasures report in front of you, and you can see the listing of the borough funds and the cash balances in each fund. Removing the police and the fire pension from that, you have a very healthy $12 million cash balance at the end of the first quarter. So, okay. So I guess you have the balance sheets, and then the revenues and expenses, is that the format that you have them in? I'm not going to go through everything, obviously. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to highlight the general fund. The general fund is doing well through the first quarter. There was a surplus of about a half million dollars. All of this is subject to audit because the audit entries are going to change things a little bit, but I don't think you'll see a huge swing. The majority of the assets on the balance sheet are the cash, which we just talked about. Of more interest are the revenue and expense statements. So I want to go to the general fund one. I should have tagged these myself. So for 2017, you budget a 10-point, almost $10.3 million in revenue. If we take a quarter of that, and I know that it's not, everything isn't, you know, across the board, things are seasonal in when the revenues and stuff come in. But if you take a quarter of that, you'd be at 2.5, almost 2.6 million in revenue, which if you look at your year-to-date revenue there, that's exactly where you are. So you're right on target with the budget. And I will say that the taxes are way under because the second quarter is going to be your big quarter for tax receipts. That's when your, the majority of your EIT money is going to come in, and your real estate tax revenues. So even without those big revenue streams, because of the timing, their second quarter, you're right on target with your budget. So that looks great. Looking at the expenses, again, taking that 12.5 million and just dividing by four to get a quarterly number, your, the budget would be about 3.1 for the first quarter, 3.1 million. And looking at the year-to-date expenditures, you can see you're only at 2 million. So you're way under, which is great. So everything looks really good so far. And if you look down the percent, the last column there, that's the percent of the budget that you've used so far. So in theory, it would be at 25% if, you know, things happened exactly in four chunks. And you can see most of them are under that, so you're in good shape. Some of the smaller funds, I'm not going to go over these in detail, but some of the smaller funds look a little bit off. Rich asked the question today, and it was something I was going to address. When the real estate tax money does come flowing in, a portion of it will get transferred out to the, to three of the smaller funds, the street lighting fund, fire protection, and library. So they look underfunded right now, but they will soon be funded with your tax receipts. So they will catch up, probably in the next month. And the capital reserve fund looks really good. You've got that RACP money, that big grant, March, right? In March. So that obviously makes that fund look really good. So that's really all I had, unless you had any specific questions about anything.
Want to touch on the streetlight fund?
Well, that's the taxes. So with the streetlight fund, the streetlight bills come in every month, no matter what. So, you know, those you can divide by 12, and you would expect a 12th of the budget each month. But the taxes don't come in until April, May, June, and so when those come in, that'll fund that fund among the other two, in addition to the other two, the fire and the library. And so right now, the streetlight fund looks like it's lost a ton of money, but it's just strictly timing. So that will-
It's cash flow.
It's cash flow. It'll flip in April. Okay? And same with those other two small ones. But that one looks-
Larger.
Larger because of the regular streetlight bills coming in, whereas the other two funds don't have regular expenditures like that.
Yes. No, they're still doing some.
Okay. Any questions? So when I'm back in July, the audit, hopefully, I will be reporting that the audit is done. And you will have final 16 numbers, and you will have stronger, you know, 17 numbers because the audit adjustments do impact that a little bit. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for having me.
Okay. Rich?
Consent agenda is the next order of business, Mr. Griffin. There are items A through J, approving and adopting the minutes from various meetings through February and March, accepting the March end treasures report and accounts payable, awarding the police uniform bid to Red the Tailor in the amount of $20,043, waiver of off-street parking for Sixth, Sixth East, First Avenue, Snap Custom Pizza, 121 Fayette Street Prestigious Pedals, and 126 Fayette Street Farmers Insurance, ratifying the appointments of Joe Collins to the Merrywood Park Commission, Dominic Rocco to the EAC, approving Haynes and Salvati Dog Park, and approving Second Avenue Meadows as a park with play equipment, approving Suck Cliff Lane Pocket Park, approving the Rotary Beer Fest with alcohol at the A Field on the second weekend of October through 2021, approving the Conshockey Business Development Corporation, otherwise known as Love Conchi's Music Event, with alcohol at the A Field on June 24, 2017, and approving the consultants for the housing rehab program as submitted and as duly advertised. It would be appropriate, if council has no issues with any of those items, for motion to adopt items A through J of the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
I've got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Griffin, the next order of business is unfinished business. There are three, two, well, there are two ordinances and two resolutions. The first ordinance is ordinance 2017-03, Amending Merrywood Park Commission, making several revisions within the ordinance to accommodate the changes that are coming and are, in fact, in place with actual operations. Adopting ordinance number 2017-04, Amending Park Regulations. Resolution 2017-03, Colwell Lane Land Development. Resolution 2017-04, Application for Traffic Signal Approval Fayette and Elm and West Elm. Mr. Savona, do you have any comments on any of the ordinances or resolutions?
Just with respect to the adoption of ordinance 2017-04, Amending the Park Regulations, as council will recall, this is to allow for council to designate by resolution certain parks where dogs will be permitted. Right now, there's a blanket prohibition to any dogs in any borough parks. This ordinance, while it'll allow council to make those designations, we still will have, you'll have to decide on, and we need to do, prepare and approve a resolution in order to designate the parks. We know the dog parks, of course, will be designated, but you'll have to give us some direction, and we'll have to do a subsequent resolution. So the ordinance will set that up, but we'll still have one more piece to accomplish.
Okay. If there's nothing more on any of those items, it would be appropriate to either adopt them one at a time, or if you wanted to, you can adopt each of those items, A, B, C, and D, as one motion? Do you have preference, Mr. Savona?
No, we could, a motion would be in order, Mr. President, to approve both ordinance 2017-3, 2017-4, and to approve resolutions 2017-3 and 4.
I'll make a motion for the first two, A and B.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
I'll make a motion for C and D.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and second for C and D. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
Okay. Under new business, Mr. Griffin, there are three items listed, and I have a fourth item that is a result of council's executive session. I'll begin with the items that are listed. Item one is to support the application for 101 East Seventh Avenue, otherwise known as Three Blind Pigs LLC, before the zoning hearing board, and support the application to 225 East 12th Avenue, the Schaefer, before the zoning hearing board, and I will turn those over to Mr. Savona.
Yes, and council will recall, we discussed at the work session, the two applications that Mr. Manfredi referenced. The first one, the 101 East Seventh Avenue, that's an application by the owners of Jasper's backyard for certain relief to eliminate two conditions that were originally imposed on the zoning board's grant of their variances in August of 2014. At council's instruction, I have prepared a proposed letter that was in your folders in the caucus room, simply indicating that council believes that we were, you were supporting the application because the request of relief would be beneficial to their use of the property and would eliminate excessive outdoor traffic between the outdoor spaces and the bar that's presently located in the main building. So if council's inclined, a motion would be in order to support the application for 101 East Seventh Avenue and authorize the solicitor to send a letter of support to the zoning hearing board.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Do I have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Very good. The second is the application for 225 East 12th Avenue. This is the application of Mary Schaefer, seeking variances for, from the zoning provisions relating to fencing. As council's aware, this is an oddly configured lot where the side yard actually extends along 12th Avenue, which makes the orientation of the building and the orientation of the yard quite unique. The applicant is proposing to fence the backyard, a large portion of which actually fronts 12th Avenue. It's a matter of safety. We discussed this at the work session. Council indicated support for the application to permit the variances to construct the fence, subject only to the condition that the final placement of the fence be subject to the borough engineer's approval in order to avoid conflict with the right-of-way for 12th Avenue. So I have likewise prepared a proposed letter of support indicating, as I just explained, if council's inclined, a motion would be in order to authorize the support of the application for 225 East 12th Avenue.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
I've got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And those will be transmitted to Mr. Clark, the zoning board solicitor, tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Griffin, the item C under new business is to consider an award of a bid for the A Field walking track. As you know, in the capital budget process and then in the final budget, there was a walking track around the A Field. The project was appropriately bid, and Mr. Hughes is here to go through that for you, if you would.
Good evening. We opened up bids this morning for the A Field walking track project. We had three bidders. Those bids were as follows. Darrell Mills Excavating, Inc., with a base bid, and just to review, we did a base bid as a six-foot wide and an alternate bid as seven feet wide. The base bid for Darrell Mills Excavating, $63,130.20. Alternate bid, $72,359.50. Second bid received was from James R. Kenny Excavating and Paving. Base bid, $72,267.90. Alternate bid, $81,299.21. Third bid was from S.J.M. Construction Company, with a base of $71,055, and an alternate of $81,296. Now, as you recall from previous discussions, the bid portion of the project is to simply build the base, and then the second part of the project is to come in and put the rubber track surface on top, which is a CoStar's arrangement with Recreation Resources. Those prices and the information provided, I'm just calling the six-foot wide option one and the seven-foot wide option two, to keep it simple. Those prices are six-foot wide, $42,900. Option two, seven-feet wide, $50,050. That brings the grand total for option one, for the six-foot wide track, to $106,030.20. And option two, for seven-feet wide, $122,409.50. Either option is well within the budget, so it's really preference, really the extra foot just gets you a little bit more comfort for two or three people walking on the track.
What are the two phases?
It's, so the first phase is a bid project where we had to, we're essentially awarding a contract to a general contractor to excavate the track area, put down the stone, and put down a standard kind of asphalt paving. Then the second part is what the CoStar's purchases for is the, is a half-inch rubber surface, so it has a little bit of, you know, give to it.
Which is, what is going in the parks? Right.
The track, yeah. The finished surface will look the same as the play surfaces.
Right.
Yep.
So it's the-
And a little safer, you know, better on the knees, all that. So I made a call, and there was a particular municipality did a handful of jobs with the low-bid contractor. Gave them a glowing recommendation. The bid was complete, so I'm recommending that, whether it's the six-foot wide or the seven-feet wide, that the award be made to the low bidder, Darrell Mills Excavating. And again, for the bid portion of the project, the contract award would either be for option one, six-foot wide track, $63,130.20, or option two, seven-foot wide track, $72,359.50.
Well, can they have that done on time?
Yeah, well, the contract is written that they have to sign the contract and mobilize in 10 days. So, and I did, I met with this particular contractor on site, and we walked the project, seemed to demonstrate a good understanding of what we're trying to do, the timeframe we're trying to do it in. So we've just got to put the hammer down on it, so.
So we're talking like $8,000 difference between the six and the seven?
Well, grand total, you're looking at the, if you include the-
$15,000.
Yeah, 15, 16, yeah.
I suggest we do the seven-foot.
I do too. Having groups of people walk there would be much more-
Definitely would make a huge difference.
For the $15,000.
Why we wouldn't want to.
No, the budget works. You get a little bit of extra room. There's plenty of room in the field. Basically, I have a design that it would just go one more foot out, so it's not going to approach closer to the playing surface. It's really kind of a win-win-win.
Great. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Paul.
Get the track on the way.
You can walk it first, Paul.
We can take the lock off there.
Yeah.
Mr. Griffin, before I bring up the last item, may I request a two-minute executive session with council? Two minutes.
Finally, okay.
Thank you.
Excuse us for a couple of minutes, please. We'll be right back. I haven't had the last laugh, come on. Thank you. You got anything else, Mr. Manfredi?
Yes, Mr. Griffin, as you know, as you announced earlier, with my resignation is the need to consider how you're going to handle the duties of the Office of the Borough Manager, as well as the Office of the Treasurer and the Office of the Secretary. So, the first item of business would be a motion to accept my letter of resignation. So, if, if there's a motion to accept my resignation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I got a motion, I got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Can I say aye?
Bye-bye.
I'm opposed.
Can you see? How do you know?
I'm opposed.
All right. With that being said, the, the next item is to appoint an interim borough manager and other related positions. Very specifically, I'll cut right to it. A motion to appoint Stephanie Checo as interim borough manager, interim borough secretary, right-to-know officer, and pension plan administrator, a salary of $110,000 during the interim period effective May 1, 2017.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Well, I'll second.
I've got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, Steph.
The, the next motion would be-
Congratulations.
Congratulations, girl.
The next motion would be to appoint Julie Davis, CPA, MBA of Dunlap and Associates, as Borough Treasurer, effective May 1, 2017.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
There is no additional new business, Mr. Griffin.
Do I got anything from council members? Mayor? Colleen?
I would just like to thank Rich for his time and service and help. He was a great manager, and I really did enjoy working with you. You helped us a lot.
Thank you very much.
And I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Also, Rich, I want to thank you for what you did for us, and I mean, I mean, you're moving a borough in the right direction, and I'm going to miss you. Thanks for your services.
Thank you, Bob.
I agree with Bob and Colleen. You've really made an impact on the borough the short time that I've been on council, and I appreciate you being a resource for us. And thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
I echo all of that. You will be sorely missed. You have brought the borough to current times, did an amazing job. I'm grateful for the mentoring that you have done to the staff, and I think that we'll feel that, we'll reap those benefits with Stephanie in the interim. And I wish you the best, and I will miss you professionally and personally.
Thank you.
How can I add to that, you know? You've meant a lot to all of us, and you will be missed. And I have one other piece of business. I would like to ask council to do a resolution for the CDBG, which the state wants to do away with our funding, and in order to protect it and to keep it, so that we can help those within the community with housing problems and concerns, that we submit a resolution not only to the PSAB, but also to our local government and our government in Harrisburg. And I would like a permit, your support in doing this resolution.
We can have something prepared for next month.
You would have to prepare for the next one.
There, there's a stand, there, there's, this is, frankly, it's one of their legislative blitzes that they're putting on in seeking every, support from various municipalities. So, there is a standard resolution that Mr. Savona could review to make sure that it's in compliance with how the borough does business, but it would just give authorization for that to be submitted as amended to suit the borough.
We, we need to hang on to this because it, it means too much to local families.
Why do they want to take our funding away?
So, it's, it's a little, it's a little deeper discussion, and it probably would have to go to our congressman because it's-
Correct.
CDBT program's coordinated through the federal government, and the most recently introduced budget that's, that's pending before Congress from the White House actually proposed to eliminate a great deal of social service programs. The Community Development Block grant money would be virtually eliminated, and that, council has had the home program here in Conch Hocke for years and years and years. We are a, a direct recipient of, of CDBG funding, not through the county, but we get it directly from the Commonwealth. And it's always been a, a central part of the work you do here for seniors and for those who don't earn enough money to make those home repairs themselves. It is a, a critical health, safety, and welfare piece of funding that we get, you know, six figures a year toward that purpose. Losing that would, would have a great impact on us, and it, it's predicted that would have a great impact on, you know, the entire Commonwealth and probably the, the nation. So, the reason it's become urgent is because of the, the budget pending in, in Washington, DC right now proposes to completely eliminate that, that program. So, I think that the PSAB is asking all boroughs who, who receive benefits from that to at least stand up and be heard and, and let your congressman know that, that it's going to impact their constituents and that we're not in favor of that action.
Mike, do you want me to forward this to you?
Yeah.
Do you need consent or a motion, Mr. Savona?
It was council directs, I'll have it on your agenda. We can adopt it in two weeks. We'll get that in, in a proper order.
Okay. Rich, I'd like to wish you a lot of luck too. Good work and peace, and good luck, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Where are you going on vacation?
I don't know, it's been so long since I've taken one, I'm not sure what I'm going to do. But I just want to say thank you to all of you. And I see Mr. McConnell in the room, and I, I, it would be very remiss of me if I didn't thank him.
Well, he showed up tonight.
So.
Yes.
So, I just thank you. I really enjoyed my time here.
Can I have any public comment?
This isn't going to be a long one.
You got two minutes.
Eight minutes. No kidding.
So, Paul McConnell, 400 block of East Elm Street, used to sit up there for a very brief time, and so I was at Mr. Manfredi's first meeting, and I'm here at his last meeting. And my perspective of the one thing not to, having, I think, three of us were here for the whole hall, well, you two, actually, a longer hall, but one perspective on it is this building, seven years, nothing, all right? So, you got to give it to a gentleman, which he used to be like six-foot eight, and you got involved in this building, but you know what? He got it done with us, for us. So, I think that's a big thing to recognize, is this thing that we're sitting in right now, it, it couldn't, it, we never got, and you know this well enough, Bob, and I, we never got anywhere with it. And then Mr. Manfredi came in, and boom, we got it done. So, I think that's worth recognizing, saying thank you for what you did for Conch Hocke, and in particular, this thing. I think you're all-
Thank you. Any more public comment? Come on, man, you've got something to say. Are you wishing good luck?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Before that?
I have one more, sir.
Okay, excuse me, one more.
Anything else?
I just see a lot of new faces in the audience. I hope, I really thank you for coming because we need, we need people in the audience here. We need people to come to the meetings. And I really, there's a lot of new faces tonight that we thank you for coming. I don't know what the reason you're here for, but thank you. Keep on coming.
You've learned a lot about the borough. No more public comment. With that, I will say, meeting is adjourned.